Welcome, it's Tuesday in it and we have, I just been to the doctor, I was told I am lacking in D vitamins, uh, no, I was, I'm lacking in D vitamins, that's fine. I was lacking in B12 vitamins, but my body showed none of the like symptoms of that, it just showed that I didn't have B12 vitamins, very weird Shit, shit's a real... Why does the eventless not capture subs? That's really weird, that's... Might not have been on at that point then, well, that's sad. Uh, but everything else is good, got a load of medicine over there, right in this bag here, uh you know, to take care of myself, make sure my brain is doing all fine and stuff. So that's nice, and I got a Pepsi Twist here to celebrate non-spawn. Uh, I just like Pepsi Twist, and it's, you know, 10:42 in the morning, you know, you gotta. Add good old sugar, dopamine and lime, it's excellent. So, uh, I found out something, one. We're still, we have some problems here in the BBCF world. Uh, cuz we're still missing Dupe, and luckily I had a Dupe expert come by and do some stuff. But that's, that's fine. But we also missed someone else, and I cannot find him on this thing. Where is the main? Nautokuragane? This fuck? We didn't have a look at him at all during the drive thing, and I don't know why. Uh, so we're going to be looking at Nautokuragane for now, uh, to start up? Yeah! So that's what we're like starting with, cuz we need this character, especially because eh Nautok won the, um, Saudi EU BBCF tournament. Luckily, uh, my co-commentator, Lazarus, had experience with the BBCF, right, that was Lazarus. Jesus Christ, now I'm self-conscious. Yeah, yeah, that was Lazarus, good, 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 good. Yeah, 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 ju- just making sure, cuz he did a fucking great job, and I wanted to ensure that, uh, that guy got the credit, cuz Lazarus knows the surprising amount of BBCF, played it a lot, um So I was glad to have him with me on there, uh, it was a big help. And luckily, he knew a lot about Naut. Uh, especially that Naut likes to dash up DP, which became a joke and was a thing the player used quite a lot. But, we are gonna boot up the Blaze Blues, the central fictions, you know, the good stuff. I have my controller plugged in. That is beautiful. Excellente. This intro slaps though, for real? Oh, this is so cool. How Ragnar is so cool? Like, come on, how is this not the raddest shit? I should like genuinely play the story modes of these games. I should actually add Jasper about that. Cuz Jasper Valkyrie, a lovely streamer and friend and commentator of mine. Not comm- friend of mine, lovely commentator, lovely streamer, uh, they do great stuff. Um, I think had like sub goals to play through the like Blaze Blue lore. Um, like games and stuff, cuz they love them like a lot. Trolle? Why are you being weird? Character specifics. Did we? Did I just accidentally skip Naut? I must have. Whoops! Well, that's an oopsie! Well, it happens, there's a lot of characters in this game. So, his drive is Blood Edge. He fights, he can conju- he can just like bleed and make weapons, it's kind of cool. So his D attacks have long range, furthermore holding down the D button will extend the range even longer. But it's him to normally block the attack, okay, so guard crush if you don't barrier it. Okay, they can be dash cancelled? Oh! So he has like Second. Okay. Bloody agi! And you? Okay, that's fine. Overdrive, Blood Pulsar, all of his D attacks become quicker. Oh, he can dash cancel them even after they make contact, okay? No! Your special attack while backdashing, the move will become enhanced. I just love that that combo is while in overdrive, that's so silly. Okay! Okay, okay, he's starting to make a bit of sense. Okay, let's just get his driving down now, and then we will have a look at his other stuff. Especially the enhancer, which I think is the most important part. Cuz that's what I really saw, that his dash cancelling is when he's really powerful. Blood Edge. Uh, sorry for just straight up cribbing your homework here, uh Dust Loop, but homies, it ain't getting better than this. Um, like, uh, yeah. Lord Repulsor. Ya what? Yeah, I'm just gonna add like the unique Um, we will have to play around with that in trading mode, I think, um But for now, let's do his special attacks, and then like do them as they come up in this tutorial. Nothing like Twitch being like, oi, oi, oi! You can manage to stream from your mobile device. It's just like, yeah, I know that by now, homies, um Okay, what are we starting with? If used while dashing, the enhanced version of Slashcade will slash opponents while advancing. Furthermore, if the base of the attack connects, Naut will slip behind him. Okay, so it's like a swipe? Yo! Okay, that's kind of rad. Flashcade is cool. Two ups all damage. Nah, that's pretty fucking powerful, actually. Also junkie hit. Hey, that's a wrecker? Inferno Crusader? Easily the best DP in the game, okay, that's important to notice. Oh, and he also has this text away. See, I'm glad that Dust Loop kind of cleaned this up, and we only have mostly the funny ones left, that's nice. Yeah, that's probably shouldn't have, um, so Flashcade. Now we also need to remember exactly how we formatted this. Yeah, good, 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 um 214D? Like, what the fuck do we even like call this, eh? Oh, wait! Uh Usual poke slash pressure tool Be used for re-stain setups? Side switches? Save on block at max range? The enhanced version is like that more, like it doesn't have, the enhanced version isn't like incredibly super more powerful, so let's not go too deep into that. Banishing Fang! Uh Banishing Fang raid is jump cancelable on hit. During the enhanced version, Naut can connect the attack all the way through the banishing Fang bash. The attack will become dash cancelable on hit. Uh, let's just do the like D version. Yo! Yo! I'm not entirely used to wreckers, so like during the repeated quarter circle is kind of awkward for me. Damn, that seems, um That seems good. Uh, let's just call the wrecker like one thing, there's no reason to split it up into separate moves, I think. Yo! Banishing Roar. 236B 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 slash C Wrecker. B finisher Hold. Bash. This If enhanced is dash cancelable on hit B finisher Hold raid. If enhe- There needs to be commas here, cuz this is a inserted sentence. Not if that's what we call in English, but in Danish it's enskudsetning. So it's like you insert a like qualifier, and thus we need commas around it. If enhanced, um Is jump cancelable on hit. Uh, rarely used without Uh, enh- Rarely used on enhanced. Bash fatal. Bash slash B finisher fatal counters. And is Like, yeah. Powerful starter. The strikes can be delayed to frame trap. Haha, now you can't judge me for grammar. Uh, that is banishing roar, what's up then? So sway! So, will avoid head attribute attacks. So that's high attacks usually. Thing. Uh, now just, just multi lobby, but you know, it's not unimportant, multi, blood is a very good game, and you should play it more. Uh The enhanced version will change when Naut will slip through the opponent while advancing. The additional attack phantom pane will hit the opponent in all situations except crouching. Yo! Yo! Yo, no, that's good, it's called Phantom Pain! No! Yo, Naut is fucking cool! Okay, that's, that's based, uh, head, body and projectile and vulnerable. Oh, so it also body invul, okay. Nah, enter dash cancel state, okay. Oh, so there used to be a shortcut, okay. Dodges highs smits and projectiles, but loses to lows and throws. Wait, no, 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 you can dash cancel this thing? Yo! Yo! Oh my god, yeah, that's a powerful option on Wake Up, actually. Wow! Oh yeah, 8A, yeah, that's the input. Yo, that's wa- Naut is even cool. Um Shift sway. 214A 8A follow-up. A high mid and projectile in spot dodge, I, I don't know, that's the correct term, um Follow up with Can hit 8A for Phantom pain after. Enhanced version, let's now Naut side switch. Wouldn't that be, let's, no, Naut is a pro- Naut is a fucking What's her name, Jesus Christ? Ah, you effing things. Jeez, how, actually, how does this like? What? No, 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 no! The fucking range on this? Hahaha! Yo! Yo, wha- man, Naut is real cool. Okay, DP. Okay, so C is head invul, D is complete invul, but It's like, takes a little longer. Okay, that can also follow. This is such a strong disrespect move. Like, not as a like taunt type thing, but like a, I think you're going to be pressing a button. That's so good! Uh, what is, hold Inferno Crusader. Uh, 623 E Q C follow. C version has head invul But starts up quicker And is therefore mostly an anti-air. D version is full invul But it's still frame one, though. But starts a bit slower. So, yeah, yeah, welcome badass. Um, so I don't touch a lot in Glazblue. Uh, I am an Azrael main, uh, so I have been like doing a lot of studying so I can commentate the game. Uh, and I have like, I've been working on this document where I like have studied everyone's drives, so I have like a basic understanding of all characters now. And now I'm like slowly going through like, I started out with this section on Ragnar, because I wanted to like, proof of concept this, um... Where I go through all the moves and like, okay, what's like? The, uh, how can I summarize this person? Um... Oh, I also did the same for Sosono. Um, and now I'm doing Naoto and Azrael today. Uh, because a Naoto won the latest Salty EU, um, Glazblue tournament and I, I had completely missed him on my first pass, so I am learning him. Enhanced version moves forward and is the best DP in the game. I'll say that. Um... Good. This. Divine Smasher. Okay, so this is one of his overdrives. Okay. Cool. I I am not like gonna write notes on overdrives specifically. And if I do, I'm probably gonna get that from Dust Loop, so we're just testing it here. Uh, if the tip of Divine Reaper hits, it becomes a multi-hit projectile. Heading the opponent with the base of attack will launch them along for follow-up attacks. The enhanced, oh my god, this is an, this is an enhanced version. Keeps the attack active while advancing, making it easier to hit with the base. Okay. Yo! So how far does this advance? Oh, damn, that, that's okay, that's cool. That seems like a combo and a type finisher where the other one is a reversal. Yeah, this is just... Grimor Phantom. Gob. Okay. And then the Astral Heat, Edge of Eternity. Wait, no, yeah, this is back and forth. Yo! Man, none, none are as cool as Azreals. It's a real shame. Ratchet. Okay. Nah, nah, not just red. Uh, let's shred your lessons here. Let's read this as well. Those cores come but yeah, stack themselves at very short range, but are highly effective when close to opponent. Okay. The enhanced version banishing fan is a great rate distance. Yeah, quarter circle throw neutral, yeah, yeah. Follow-up with the late banishing thing raw. Yep, mhm. With an air dash, yeah. Go ahead, 6A, yep, and low crouching B and TC. Uh... Yes, that's anti-air, just invulnerable D, yep. Yes, with three, lovely, okay. Hell plane. Okay, kick him in the head, that's fine. Excellent. Okay, I think that's like, all I really need now, so we're just gonna finish writing up its overdrive names and stuff, um... We get that written down and then we go to Azrael. My boy. So... How was the format for this? Yeah, just like distortion drives, then do them exceed, exceed XL, exceed Tatarus, Astral Heat. Excellent, um... Naoto, where are you? There we go. Oh my god, distortion drives. Oh no. Then we start with Divine Smasher. 632146B. Yeah, okay. It's projectile invul. Um, okay. Usually combo and, uh, but can break out of air resets. And this is the one called Divine Reaper. B? Okay, that's weird, but okay. Uh... Oh dear, Divine. I wrote Rita, damn, okay. Uh, Divine Reaper is Naoto's strongest... Oh my god. Yeah, that's a vowel, so we need a apostrophe. Yeah. Eat XL. And that's how it's spelled. X seed. X, no, no, no. X seed. X seed acceleration, that's... Grim of Phantom. It's actually for Ragnar gift, uh, yeah, yeah, Astral Heat, um, yeah, yeah. Because I feel like it's nice to have the Astral Heat, uh, notation, so in case I am fucking around the character, I have that. Astral Heat, Edge of Eternity. Now, knowing what the Astral Heat's names are and stuff ain't the most important, but, uh, I commentate, uh, and boy, it is really nice to have when someone hits it and then you can like very quickly check and then call it by the proper name. Uh, it helps a lot. Uh... One of the easiest astrals to hit. The enhanced version glides real far. I I didn't assume he could enhance the Astral Heat, but he can, because Naoto... Excellent. Naoto Kuragane. Beautiful character, beautiful gun character on the sheet. Excellent. Now for my boy. Azrael. Oh, I love this bo- Yo. Azrael is one of my favorite fighting game characters of all time. He's so great. Um, I I love him so much. He's such a lovely homie. Okay. Character specifics. Azrael, special text. Pixel. Okay. Oh, I'm just gonna do something. Ah, it's so... Ah, that wasn't properly TK'd. Then get the momentum. Gustav Buster's so good. Sorry, uh, tha- that just happens when I get to play with Azrael, sorry. Uh, he's just the best. Azrael is just, just the best. Uh, Gustav Buster. Oh, Azrael is so good, I love him. 236A. Approach tool slash pressure and, uh... Whoa, wait, you just use it during the forward dash? Okay, we'll have a look at that later, because... Yeah, can only follow up and counter it, that's fine. Um... Plus one on block. Minus one on IB. Um... Yeah, tha- that's basically all I need to say there. That's all I need to say there. Uh, do you know what's the best part about this? Yo, yo, cross off Rekka? Oh, I think it's like you throw? Nah, I've, there's like throw combo for him in, um, the fucking Azrael, uh... Yeah. I feel like I'm just gonna be like Tiger Magnum. No, we're gonna call it Tiger Magnum Cobra. Cobra Strike. Because it has names, so we're fucking using them. Uh, tha- tha- that is, if it's worth doing, it's worth overdoing. I watch Miss Buster. Leopard launcher! It's usually just shortened as TCL on, uh, combos and stuff. Uh, which is interesting. Um... Yeah, uh... 236C. 6C. 6C. RPS Rekka. Um... Unsafe on block. But uh, each drive can be cancelled into 214D or 236D or East Drakken D. Delayed to frame trap or just mhm. Like nothing. Like you can just stop the thing there. Um... Yeah, it's very good Rekka. Uh, it's very fun to use. It's very unfair. I love it. Oh yeah, Sentinel Dump. It's a very weird move. I I haven't really fallen in love with it yet, so there's like invul at the start and then like hits and you are incredibly plus here. But what's interesting is that there's two versions of it. What the fuck, Wakanama? Yo! There we go. Hahaha, that's unblockable! So Sentinel Dump. Uh... Oh, the knockdown is fully invul? Okay. Oh yeah, it tracks the opponent, cause of course. Oh yeah, I can cross up if they're crouching, I forgot! Oh, it's so stupid. Oh, can be tech rolls, that's actually. Oh, okay. It has multiple guard points, it's just a short guard point frame, again. Uh, Sentinel Dump. Uh, 214C. Slash 22C. Uh... Reset. Slash Oki Tool. Uh, like how pl- it's plus 10 on block. Both on block. Uh, that's the like 214, um... As guard points uh, on the first 10 frames. Can cross up on crouchers. Um... Good use on Oki as it catches rolls. Yeah. Technically a projectile! Why is it a projectile? I need to add that to the end! Technically a projectile, which means you can growler field it, which is wild. Okay. So, the kind of problem these end of characters has is the- okay, we don't get. So Valiant Crush. Oh, this is- this move is so fucked. Uh-huh, you saw that? Okay, wait, now how do we? Valiant Charger stank, um... Oh, that forces a fatal counter? It has a guard point during charging? Yo! Nah, this 236D. Overhead. I don't even know what do we- Risky overhead with high reward. Minus 26 on block. And follow up with 6. If it hits a weak point. Valiant Charger is fucking wild. That move is so stupid. I love it. Oh no, that's not the only one he has, don't worry about it. Hornet Bunker. Auto-block effect moments before tagging. Uh, we didn't get the full combo here. Now we need to wait a little bit longer. Hehehe! Yeah! Hornet Bunker is stupid. I love it. Uh... Means 23- oh, guard point, yeah. Hornet Bunker. He- oh yeah. Uh, Charge. Risky low. Uh, 13 on block. And follow up with 8. If it hits a weak point. Those two moves are just fucking wild. They- Azrael is the silliest character. I love him so much. Oh! So, yeah, he has very powerful mix, but his defensive tools may not be the- oh wait, he has a DP? Oh wait, he can- he can re-flank cancel off the DP? Oh. Boink! You can even like use it like this! Would you like- why does this fucking character have a DP as well? Why wo- why would you? Why would you? Thank you? Just why, why does my boy have a DP? I'm so happy he doesn't, but why? Those are the best DPs honestly, where you just look at the character and just think he really shouldn't have a DP. It's even head and wolf for the last- Oh! You can hold forward to adjust trajectory? Uh, 623B. Excellent DP. Can be acid to make it safe. That's the- that's it! It's a fucking DP for some reason. Also, I need to- Oh my god! I didn't realize. Yeah, like yeah, you ne- you can only really use it against projectiles. Yeah, yeah, good, good. Ha, so yeah. Azrael struggles against projectile characters, it's very sad. Um... Oh, sorry, did I say something? Hehehehehe! Yeah, and it's also like a hit. I can fucking fire back? Why fight back? Oh, he's so good. Oh, why is he so good? 214B. Charge. Uh... Anti-projectile tool. Um... Projectile invul reversal. Fully invul if he absorbs. Um... Azrael can save 3 growler stocks at once. It's- it's just so good and then Belings Cannon. Why, why do I- What, he can combo it to Blackhawk Stinger? That's so funny! Yeah. So it has a drawback, you know. It's not- it is broken block. So Blackhawk Stinger, this finisher. Now if you have a red, um weak pointer, you can't block it while standing. If you have a yellow, you can't block it while crouching. If both are active, it's unblockable. Yo! Heh, haha! Oh, why does he- Oh, he's so good, um... So has a guard point somewhere in the, uh... So good. It's so good. Great combo ender. Silly setup tool. As weak points make it high or low unblockable, but both weak points make it just ground unblockable. Ni- their barrier. Scott Punishment. Uh... As much as I love this move, it's actually not as good distortion drive! It's like, it's not the good one. That's this thing here. Hi! Have both of them. Also, loo- look, I'm in this like Scott Punishment thing. Yo! It's so good. So, Scott Punishment. Hi! Cancel into this after. Boink! Oh, Scott Punishment is fun. Plus it's a reversal. Yeah, it's not the greatest reversal, but it is a reversal. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I spelled that the fuck wrong. Oh boy. He's- he's my- he's my main. I love Azrael so much. Oh yeah, Full Spartan! This is actually kind of cool. Um... Yeah. Full Spartan. Astral Heat. I don't even remember what the input is for this. Oh yeah. Oh, it's called Patriot Apocalypse? Jesus, tha- How did that input work? Like I'll take it, but damn! Like, ah, that's so cool. Azrael is the coolest character. Um... Um... It's so good, uh... Boy. Ah, fuck, he's such a cool character, uh... Hail Mary reversal! It has a frame advantage of minus 126! 46C. 5A, like, I just like, that's everything, um... I just want that in there, not for any like real reason, I just think that's a funny fact. I just think that is incredibly funny, because then if it ever happens, I will have that factoid to pull out of my ass. And I think that's it for the like study session part of it, because I think now I wanna play some Azrael. Um... So I'm going to set up a lobby. I'm gonna start inviting some peeps. Uh, if you're in chat and wanna come join, do that, so, uh... Um, I will probably do a like password thing, online lobby. And again, if that doesn't work, we'll just like open it up for rainbows as well. Because if, uh... No, 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 no. Play a match, play a match, create a room. Uh, we'll call it, uh, Jaxand. Refall capacity. Can I do like a... Yeah, I think that's the like best thing I can do. Um... And then recreate a... Well, just got to proof while I figure how to... A BBCF Steam... Lobby, Steam, link. Oh! So, we... Simo, go to profile? What? Go to my profile. Uh... Invite anyone to play? That sounds good. Now, that's remote thing. That's not what we wanted, um... There we go. And then we copy link address, right? Excellent. It'll be in my Discord list. Uh, I'm also just gonna yeet it in chat. So that it's there. And then I'm gonna hit up Salty. Yeah, for Jesus Christ. The fact that closes down every time is frustrating. But yeah, ideally someone should come by, but if not, then we'll just like turn down the invite slots and rainbows can come in. Actually, let's do that. Uh, adjust room settings. I can't do the fucking, uh... Invite slots? Adjust room settings, oh... Yeah, that'll dispend room, create another room. Invite slots should be fine, create room. Lobby link should still work, I think. Oh, uh... I will try making that, uh... I just got a, someone failed to connect, create room, uh, well, fuck that shit, then we say nothing. Excellent, like... I hear rumors of interesting players coming by. Because at least someone I know is, uh... A good player. Who might love to fight with, uh, because I've enjoyed the like environment of this game so far. It's, uh... It's been a very like open and welcoming community. They've just been like, "Yo, come fight, come fight me." I don't like having the event list up there, because it's still the fucking... Uh, just sharing a friend code, well, fuck it, we'll do this on stream. I don't give a shit, um... Uh, trends. That's my friend code, if you wanted. Yep. There he is, confirm. Invite to lobby at least. That's a Rift2Enjoyer I see though. So, Rift2Enjoyer, I've played with a lot. Uh, oh boy, a Jin player, interesting. That makes sense. They don't know how much Rift2Enjoyer has fucked with this game before. But I have a suspicion, we are just letting Red Raven get a confirmation here. And they should just be able to join them. That's a decent connection, lovely. Okay, we got fucking zone there. Yeah, we didn't take out properly. Oh my god, chase the tech roll. Oh my god, see, again, you don't wanna... You don't wanna like tech roll out, but you also wanna block. So you have to be very certain of when you can start blocking without tech rolling, uh, which is hard. No, okay, we got mesh. Oh, well, a baron, that's... Oh, purple turret tech, yeah, I could have ticked that, but that was a hitstone throw. Just ensuring that Red Raven got in as well. But I made sure to add Red Raven, are you not? Is it command grab invite to lobby? Let's try that. Not entirely sure. I assume that's the... That's a name I didn't recognize. Oh, we got charged. That's a charge attack, okay, okay. That's a cool setup. Okay, there we died, okay, okay. What's that command grab daddy? I will assume so, because I didn't get my insult. We take those? Okay. Like, I'm really getting stuck in the fucking, uh, oki loops. Uh, because I simply don't know when I should start blocking, uh, or trying to reversal. I think I should just focus on actually blocking, um... Homie's gonna be in the air. Hey, that's an overhead. Hey, went low there. Medi. Hey, throw combo. No, Jacob, that's not how you follow up them. Also, I tried to, uh, Blackhawk, uh, punish Blackhawk Stinger, but again, I pressed the D, uh, too early. At least we got out the corner. That, my face when I realized I have burst. Why the fuck can't I see a Red Raven on Steam? I'm so sorry. Invite to lobby. Steam, show me all of my friends! Uh, yeah, uh, lobby link. Well, that's not the lobby link, uh... Well... Here's my friend code, send me a friend request. That's how we're doing it for now. Now, I would like to see all my friends playing Blazblue, but okay. Excellent, I will add you after this. Okay. Yep, that's appreciated. We realized we have burst. You should! It's real good! The addition of rollback is nice. Oh, well, that's not what I wanted, but we take it. Okay. Uh, yeah, I'm in Europe, so... But again, I'm pretty sure the homie I'm playing with is from Israel, so... Yeah, no. You should be, yes. Confirm now. Uh, invite to lobby. That's a Red Raven on here, that's excellent. I have suspicion these two are fighting now. Oh, waiting, I had... Oh, waiting, I don't know. Don't particularly mind. Yep, they are battling, that's good, good. One should be on their way in here. Excellent. Ooh, is that Turumi? Is that a... Is that a mix or is that a Turumi? Cuz Turumi's rad. Yep, yep, Yuki Turumi. He's a fun character. You know, fair. I hear women side is good. I really wish I could get more into Warhammer stuff, it's... I know, I'm just happy I can steal the like gold fantasy miniatures from my D and D games. When I start running them again. Hey, motherfucker. Wild aggressive asshole, no, okay! Hi, you aren't blocking this, take damage. Hi, you're getting hit. No, yeah, that sounds rad. Like usually that's my experience with multiplayer, like, stuff like that is... Playing it with friends is just the actual good way of playing it. Okay, yeah. We DP out. Hey, we are not close enough to get a fucking header. Hi! Yeah, yeah, we got punished for that. Oh, that's a good reflex cancel. Yeah, we're getting reamed. Hi! Yeah, no, we died, we died. Okay. We can even this out. Hi! Hey, we are minus 3. Hi, Scott punishment? No, we're killed. We are probably dead here. Turumi's very powerful. Hi, they should counter combo. Nooo, so close, that's fun, that's good, good game, everyone, I'm happy. That's a fight jung. Also, I need to figure out who the fuck command grab daddy is on my friend list. I genuinely have no clue who the fuck command grab daddy is. Who the fuck could that be? Excellent. Also, okay. This map looks rad. No, we're too close to the edge. Hi! Hey, that's interesting. Okay, connection was lost, that happens. Not entirely sure why, but that happens. I can assume I'm getting messages on Steam if people want invites back in. Happened the first time, not entirely sure what you mean, but yeah. These things happen, like, send me a Steam message now and I will like invite you back in. After this game here. Or else you can just press join lobby and it should be fine. Oh, the small push towards the edge, that was so good! Yeah, no. Right now. I was like, can I, can I, that sounds weird to be invited, no, no. Yeah, yeah, no, no, it happens, damn, sorry, fucking... Rev2Enjoyer is nasty. Yeah, I haven't had a DC in Blazeploo either, which is weird. I don't wanna go to hell though. Just sending that invitation in case they... Also DC doesn't appear. I'd rather have people have too many invites than two of you, you know? Yeah, had a suspicion, give it to me, Red Raven, are you playing Izanami or are you just tricking? Izanami on, oh boy, okay, interesting. Izanami is a weird character who uses her barrier gauge a lot. And has like a special stance where she can fire a projectile, but it's also invulnerable, but it drains her barrier. She's weird. I haven't played her before, so that'll be fun. Try, like I haven't played against one, I have just... Fift a round with her a little bit. Hey, yeah, so that rib cage thing there is her invul. No, we did the wrong thing, I just wanted 6D. Yo! What a nasty combo! What, that was so nasty! Damn, Red Raven, you are... I've commentated Red Ravens in Gilte Gear, and yeah, they, uh... They scary. Yep, hit me with fatal counter starter. Yoiks! Okay, but all those are mids technically. Haha, the electrocution! Okay, okay, okay. Yeah, we're dead. By god! By god, that was hard! Yo! Red Raven's scary! My hearing is working properly. Just making sure. Uh, cuz my hands are feeling cold. And cold hands and doing stuff that requires finger dexterity isn't a good mix. You need to keep those warm and nice. There, I'm just like warming them right now. Under the shirt and damned, ooh, these fingers are cold teeth, that's not, that's not good. Yo, okay, okay, okay. Oh my god, that mix! Yo! Yo! Yeah, we hit that fucking fireball, that was not smart. Ah, well. We did our best we could, we got the double, we quite set up. That's like position we want to be in. Hi! Oh yeah, oh my god, into distortion. Yo! Yeah, I needed that fucking part. Yeah, I really needed those body parts. Yo, that's cool as fuck, is that the X, like Xeetaxol? Uh, so what I tried to do there was Blacksting Punisher. Uh, Blackhawk Punisher and then, uh, like reset after that, but no. I think that was like the correct way of thinking, but like, that would have been a solution to the problem, but I needed to figure out how to defend here better. Would crouching actually, cuz they're all mids, would that help me? Might actually help if I crouch while she's doing the weird floating thing. Cuz they are mids. But then she, I feel like she would probably quickly stop floating and then get me with the overhead. And again, sorry, I'm using she cuz referring to a character and... I'm honestly not entirely sure of Red Raven's pronouns. Oh my god, yeah. Yeah, that was not what we wanted though. Hey. Ready to punish, okay, she's in rip cage, she's in rip cage, I'm glad that Scott punishment did not come out. Ah, tried to Scott punishment, there wasn't time, so I just stopped blocking. Yeah, no! That's a fucking startup! Yo, okay, so that's a command grab though, okay, okay. Okay. Yeah, really needed to recite a poem before killing me, that's, ah, that's kind of rude. Ah, it's not your Red Raven, that's the fucking character, damn, really? A poem? I appreciate poems, but damn! That's a, uh... That's a way to send a message? Probably gonna call stream in half an hour where we had 1pm here in a Central European time. Cuz then I'm gonna get some lunch and then we'll probably stream some Mashjong. No, yeah, should have burst earlier. Okay, we got frame trap. Yo, that ends here though? Yeah, we're dead, Jesus! Yo, Red Raven, you are nasty! The fucking peak range hit there? Hi! Oh, we got astral! Astral, ah, god, Red Raven! Yo, 3D skulls? Yup, that's a, yup, that's a, yup, that's a... Well, it happens! You know, you gotta... When life hands you elves, you gotta look at them and hold them. That's how it is, you hold the fucking elves. That's how it is, man. That's not the worst deal I've taken in my life. Oh, you're sending a nine? Okay. Fuck, like fuck nine, her range is so wild, she's so hard to approach, I feel. She can do some peak foozies. But I like it, Red Raven, get the astral heat then send it to secondary, haha! Oh! Oh, oh, sorry, this song bangs. Want something to drink? Sup? That was a bad burst! Uh, cuz that was the Gustaf finisher, and yeah, you don't finish fucking combos with Gustaf for reason. Hey, we got A8. Pick up, get down. Yo! That ok was sick! Damn! He got fucking smoked! Yo? Oh, expected the jump right there, okay. Doesn't expect to roll forward now? Yo! Yo! Hi, well, you're blocking it lower at least. Nooo, I didn't fucking know nine had a dash attack! But we know that now. Give her to me again. This is good. So, uh, Just Dave, a homie I play with a lot and a good friend of mine. Also plays nine, so this is excellent practice. Yeah, I probably need to uncrop this image a little bit cuz it doesn't capture the glory that is my face. Doesn't expect this. No, totally dead. Okay, that's an overhead. Yo, that's a bad burst! Hey, we are getting ok'd on so hard. Hi, you can block this now. Yo! Yo! Sorry, I was poking so hard, I didn't... You could fucking, oh yeah, they're teleport dashes, you're gonna wire it, that's so cool! Oh, I at least put a guard to corner. Hi! Ah, fuck, I went to overdrive and then Black Hawk stinger. Ah, fuck, Azrael. Man, Azrael is so much fun! Like, this character is so broken. I love him so much. How is, how is he allowed to be alive? How? Okay, okay, back on nine? Like, if you're watching, it's up to you. I will fight whatever. Like, I believe that just testing yourself against things is what helps you improve and like... Especially at this stage where I just kind of need to get more used to the char- character and how the game functions, right? New color, okay. They can, still has plenty of time to anti-air there. Okay, okay, straight middle low. Hi, well, that's not what I wanted, but I'll take it. I, I wanted 6C, uh, 6D rather. Oh, did not get over that properly. Oh yeah, I, I have 2C that I can use to mix up my approach in the, uh... I forget about that. Yo! Hey, we... Mid overhead, okay. Okay, we got overhead, yeah. That's rock. A boy. Yeah, went with the overdrive so could charge me without needing to hit me and then spill, yeah. At least I understand why I'm getting owned, right? Like, I am understanding how exactly I am getting fucking rolled. Rather than just being rolled. Uh, which is nice. Okay, those two are battling, that's fine. Excellent, uh... This actually is a great opportunity for me to get water. Biubiu. Sweet, gimme Red Raven! Yup, you're staying on his mom, yeah, that's fine with me. Fucking rip cage bitch. Hey, that's throw. Hey, no, has anti-air on point here, so I need to like, jump and then 2C. Hi, should this work? Hi? No, we got ruined. Tell him how just block! Okay, that's, okay, damn! Okay, that's an overhead. Get the fuck away from me, you weird thing. Okay! XZed XL, that's fine. Spend your burst on that. Hi! Hey! No, damn, oh my god! His Nami is fucking wild. I like, kind of need to learn how to deal with that lady. She's a very interesting character, honestly, um... And I'm like glad I'm getting experience against her. Cuz she's... You're kind of just gonna hold the mix and like... I think I need to figure out when I can retaliate. And I think the answer is when her barrier runs. Ah, no, she can float still without being in the... Fucking triangle thing. Will, uh... Hey, that's overhead. Hi! Hey! Hey, yeah, no, I need to respect that thing. My brain doesn't want to. No, she was... Jacob, if she's in the rip cage, you can't hurt her. Ergo, your DP does nothing! Hi, Scott punishment? Yo! Okay, and we got killed. That's fine, that's fine. We got to pop off! We got to pop off, who cares if we win? Looks like jumping may actually be a strong option there. Uh, let's not get in the corner. Hi, Rip Cage! Goodbye life! Yeah... E- even if she wasn't in rip cage, that was a bad DP. Like, there's, there's no, like, other way around here. That's me being... A dumb-dumb. Uh, with like exclamation marks afterwards. That's, yeah, I know. Also, who the f- I need to figure out who command grab daddy is on my friends list. I have no clue. Based anti-air? Oh my god, the most beautiful dodge of all time. No, let's get the fuck out of this. Hey? Hey? Yeah, we're kind of wrecked here. Yeah, we're just dead. Oh my god, that, yeah, no, that killed. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Hey, that's the overhead. Hi, Scott punishment? Oh! Ouch, yeah, no, yeah, going into 5C there is a miss. Why would I think I can do that? That's, wh- why would my brain be like, "Yeah, Jacob, that's a fucking good idea"? Uh, re- transform? Reset, yeah, let's drag you the fuck down to size. This and transform center to screen. That's probably fine. That's fine for now. I'm not happy with it, but it's fine for now. Go, go, go. Cuz then I don't have to like be very careful about where my head is, then I can just, you know... Move around freely like I would like to. And still have, you know, my body on camera. Which, yeah, uh... If I'm not on camera, it's kind of stupid to have a camera, you know? I, I, being entirely honest, then it's kind of dumb. Yeah, yeah. Yo! I'm seeing more interesting stuff coming from Red Raven, which I'm happy about cuz I feel like... That means Red Raven must be like turning up the levels of gameplay on me. Yo! I don't know the fuck is that? It's Miao's first time in my chat. Just... Must recognize him just from the solstice, uh... What div shit, I don't know. Okay, boy, let's, uh... Yeah, oh my god! Hi! Sup? Ah, well, XZed XL killed. Yo, that's not, that's the fucking, damn! Well, that is the XZed. Learned that. Nami is pretty far down the list of characters I wanna learn though. Might, just like... I'm sending nine for the last one? Okay. There we go, that's the fucking thing I wanted. Yo! Yeah, fuck, got caught. I was like, I realized she was coming down, but I didn't. Probably should've 6B cuz then... Yo! This thing is so fucking wild. The spell that's on me right now is probably going to hurt so much. Oh, we got overheaded, yeeesh! Yeah, no, that's a bad DP Jake. That one's on me. That one's on me. Like, there, there's no excuse there. Oh, fuck, remember the fucking rock overhead. Jesus, that feels like a 50/50, but it's not, I should be able to either, not, maybe not react to like, the wake up situation, but I should be able to recognize when they are like creating the spells and stuff, um. I wanna like do some Azrael, just straight up combos. Um. Like, just, I'm just like literally opening dust loop here. We are saying combos and I'm dragging this over to my other monitor so I can like have a look at it. Yo, a banger, so the first thing is, okay, now. Oh my god, yes, this, for some reason then, the, no, no, just, no. No, Jacob? Hmm. No, but, Hey, maybe? Uh, can I like, uh, training dummy, I'm blocking uh, after first turn. No, Jacob? Hmm. Hi, this. Okay, there we go. Okay. So then, oh, this only works on crowd shows. Hey, that's probably not. Okay, and this, he is just dead. Wait, so in corner? Okay, that's base. So there's also a version that applies a weak, weak point. Uh. No, forgot to jump cancel. Forgot to jump cancel again. Okay, fuck that, uh. Okay, that's just counter hit. Okay. Just actually checking chat and sharing. Yeah, GG's Red Raven, like, thank you for coming by, I appreciate that a lot. Uh, help, help me realize some pause in my defense, thank you. Um, so, back throw. You can, you can, wait, you can just literally back throw into that? Yeah, 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 we need to just actually summon probably. Yo, that's a, that's hard to hit, okay? Hahaha! That fucking jump, that's so good! Okay. Now, place blue good, place blue very interesting. We uh, we got some uh, good stuff out of this today. Uh, thank you people for coming by, thank you to Viomond, Red Raven and Rift2Enjoyer for coming by the lobby and fighting. That was a joy, um, document is faring well. We are getting some beautiful stuff in here. I'm quite happy with that. Um, and uh, that should be it for me for now. I will go get some lunch and do some, you know, taking care of myself, that'll be very nice. And then I will see you later on this winter solstice. Goodbye, good night, I, no, good afternoon probably, good noon, I, I love you!